Good evening. Thank you all for joining us for this regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Trustees of Socorro ISD. Today's date is July 23rd, 2019, and the time is 6:01. Our pledge of allegiance tonight is going to be led by Joanna Serrano, who is a 7th grader at John Druigan. Joanna, and if you'll all please stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joanna. We will continue with item number three, Superintendent's comments. Dr. Espinosa.
Yes, President Nakada, members of the board. I would like to make a statement in regards to the media attention that our school district has received. So if you can just allow me a little bit of time, Mr. President Nakada and board members. First and foremost, I'd like to apologize to our Socorro ISD community for the media coverage our district has received recently. Let me be very clear, this was not a fight, this was an assault. It is very important for our community to understand the difference between a fight and an assault. A fight is a mutual combat. The legal definition of mutual combat is a combat in which the parties interwillingly. It is a combat with the mutual intent to fight. An assault is the act of inflicting physical harm or unwanted physical contact upon a person. And I want to emphasize that it is documented on a San Antonio police report that I was a sober victim of a physical assault on June 13th while in San Antonio. A San Antonio police officer who was working at the location witnessed the suspect headbutt me and saw that I reacted with one single punch, which was in self-defense. The police officer's witness testimony is noted on the police report, which I confirmed as factual and accurate. A San Antonio Police Department Sergeant led the investigation in which he interviewed witnesses and advised me that as a citizen of the state of Texas, I had a right to defend myself. And he asked me if I wanted to press charges. I chose not to since I was not seriously hurt. In SISD, for both students and adults, an investigation is conducted to determine who was the victim and who was the offender in an assault, or whether both parties participated in mutual combat. Factors such as self-defense are considered as per SISD's guidelines of assessing disciplinary consequences that is found on page 54 of our student code of conduct. I want to emphasize that in our district, we do not have a one-size-fits-all, zero-tolerance policy. Every single case is different. A student identified as a victim who did not enter a fight willingly would not receive any disciplinary action. Those investigations and determinations are made at the campus level. And in my case, I was identified as the victim of an assault by the San Antonio Police Department and was informed by their sergeant after his investigation that I had a right to protect myself. Citizens in the state of Texas, including school superintendents, teacher staff, and students, have a right to defend themselves from bodily harm. Again, I apologize that this situation has distracted from the great work of our teachers and staff. We're now moving forward to another successful and exciting school year. Thank you, President Nakada.
Yes, sir. And item number four, special presentations. Mr. Escobar.
Good evening, President Nakada, members of the board and Superintendent Dr. Espinosa. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. If you'll please step down to receive our honorees. Our first special presentation will recognize former Herschel Antoine Counselor, now a counselor at Paso de Norte School for being named the 2019 Texas School Counselor of the Year by the Lone Star State School Counselor Association. The School Counselor of the Year Award honors professionals who devote their careers to advocate for students, address their academic and social-emotional development, and college and career readiness. This counselor will be recognized at the LSSSCA conference in November and will represent all 9,000 Texas school counselors in the ASCA National School Counselor of the Year Awards Program this fall. From Paso de Norte School, congratulations to Ms. Amanda Bustamante. Ma'am, if we will have you, please join the board and Dr. Espinosa for a photo. And just a quick note that the photo taken tonight by our district photographer, Mr. Largo, will be posted on the district website. There's a camera icon on the bottom right-hand corner where they are available for a free high-resolution download. Next, we will introduce an extraordinary group of educators who have devoted many years of service to Team SISD and its students, our 2019 retirees. The retiring employees will receive a personalized photo collage to commemorate their time in the district and a lifetime activity pass to enter sporting events in the district for free. These outstanding individuals have been vital members of Team SISD and dedicated mentors for our children. During their time in SISD, they have educated thousands of students, offered guidance and support, and led the path to endless opportunities for our children. We appreciate their longtime commitment and service to Team SISD and wish them well during their retirement. Our first recognition this evening is for Maricela Armandari, teacher from El Fida Chavez Ms. Armandari has been with the district for 24 years. One of her greatest memories in the district was being nominated as an Al Paso Times Teacher of the Year. Congratulations once again. Next is Sonia Bonilla, teacher from Desert Wind School. Ms. Bonilla has been a member of the Team SISD family for 36 years. Her colleagues say she is a supportive coworker and she will miss the friendships and bonds she created with them while being a member of Team SISD. Congratulations once again, Ms. Bonilla. Next, we have Sandra Burton, teacher from John Druigan School. Ms. Burton has been with the district for 13 years. She will miss being an active member on her campus, whether it's in the classroom, at basketball games, or assisting with track and field. Congratulations once again. Next is Edward Backman, teacher from Montwood High School. Mr. Backman has been with Socorro ISD for 27 years. His favorite thing about being a teacher was showing students that learning can be fun and helping improve their self-confidence. Another round of applause for Mr. Backman. We'll continue with Sylvia Ensina, social worker from Herschel Antoine. Ms. Ensina has been serving the needs of SISD students for 29 years. She says she loves working with SISD and is proud to be the district's first licensed master social worker. Thank you for your service, ma'am. We'll continue with Rosario Espinosa, crossguard from Sierra Vista Elementary. Ms. Espinosa served the district for 23 years. What she will miss the most about working for Socorro ISD is spending time with children and her daily duties and encounters with colleagues at work. Congratulations again, ma'am. Next, we have Silverio Ferrando from Warehouse and Operations. Mr. Ferrando has dedicated 35 years of his life to Team SISD. He is excited to retire so he can rest for two months, then go back to school to refresh his knowledge. Next, we have Sylvia Flores from Human Resources. Ms. Flores has been with the district for 20 years. She has no plans of slowing down during her retirement. She plans to care for her mother, babysit her grandsons, and volunteer. Congratulations once again. We'll continue with Ken Jury, teacher-coach from Americas High School. Mr. Jury has served Team SISD for 21 years. His favorite memories include having the opportunity to coach numerous wrestlers, among them, two who won state titles and brought them back home to Socorro ISD. Next is Michaela Machuca from Transportation Services. Ms. Machuca has been with SISD for 13 years. She is excited to unwind, spend time with her family, and travel during her retirement. Congratulations again, ma'am. We'll continue with Cecilia Marcus, Head Custodian from Helen Ball Elementary. Ms. Marcus has been a member of Team SISD for 20 years. She's had many special moments as a district employee, her favorite being the support she received from the administration team at her school when her son joined the Marines. Congratulations once again, Ms. Marcus. We'll continue with Miguel Martinez, a grounds employee with SISD Operations. Mr. Martinez has been a part of the district for 26 years. He will miss the people he worked with and plans to spend time and join his family and grandkids. Congratulations, Mr. Martinez. Next, we have Letizia Macias, a wind teacher from Mission Ridge Elementary. Ms. Macias has been with the district for 30 years. Among the things she will miss most about working for SISD are her students, colleagues, and administration, who have become like her own family. Congratulations again, ma'am. We continue with Pedro Ortega, teacher and coach from Colonel John O. Enzer Middle School. Mr. Ortega has served the district for 35 years. He proudly served as a head coach of the Socorro High School girls' basketball team. Congratulations on an outstanding career, sir. Next, we have Emiliano Rodriguez, custodian from the Education Service Center. Mr. Rodriguez has been with the district for 14 years. He is excited for his retirement and eager to travel, rest, and spend more time with his family. Congratulations again, sir. We'll continue with Cecilia Sines, a CNS employee from Escondrias Elementary. Ms. Sines served in the district for five years. What she will miss most about working is the advice and support she received from her coworkers. Thank you again, Ms. Sines, for your service. We'll continue with Lorena Smalley, registrar from Mission Early College High School. Ms. Smalley has been with the district for 21 years. One of her favorite memories is being a part of the opening of Mission Early College High School under the leadership of the school's first principal, Dr. Admando Aguirre. Congratulations again, ma'am. Our next recognition is for Mary Jane Aravalo Webb, a teacher from Helen Ball Elementary. Ms. Webb served Socorro ISD students for 14 years. After her retirement, Ms. Webb hopes to continue making a positive impact on people and children by serving as a volunteer. Congratulations again, ma'am. We continue with Guadalupe Perez Dejaro, custodian from Americas High School. Mr. Dejaro has been a member of Team SISD for 18 years. He is excited about resting and spending time at home now that he is retired. Congratulations once again, sir. And last but certainly not least, we have Alice, a canine from our SISD Police Services. Alice has kept Team SISD safe for 11 years, or shall we say, 77 dog years. Her plans after retirement include becoming a full-time pet for her handler. She is with, accompanied by her canine trainer and partner, Ramiro Gonzalez. If we can have you all, please return to the front for a photo with our superintendent and Board of Trustees. Yeah, if you want to help her with... And again, the photo is taken by our district photographer. It will be posted online, available for free high-resolution download. Can you see everybody there? There we go. All right, everybody look straight ahead, right at Mr. Largo with his hand up, and look at him, just say cheese and don't stop smiling. Keep looking straight ahead, right down the center. Keep looking straight ahead. Keep looking straight ahead, right down the center. Congratulations once again, on behalf of all Team SISD. Thank you all for your service. Yes, this concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you all. Congratulations. Congratulations.
I've been warm all day. Their mama did. I did. Yes? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to continue with our agenda this time.
Mrs. Nakada?
Yes, sir, Mr. Gondola.
If I can have a few seconds real quick. I just want to acknowledge that we do have a distinguished guest with us today. The gentleman that opened Robert R. Rojas School when it first opened are one of our old assistant superintendents, Mr. Bustamante. And so that you all know, he was, I was a second grader when that school opened, so... Again, thank you again, Mrs. Bustamante.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Welcome. Item number five, open forum. We greatly appreciate those individuals who have requested to speak to the board during open forum or in regard to a specific agenda item. We are bound by certain time constraints in order to cover all the items on the agenda, and therefore must limit presentations to five minutes. Please respect the rights of others in your presentation. By law, the board cannot take action upon or discuss any item which is not posted on tonight's agenda, but we will give all presentations our sincere, our serious consideration. Thank you, and let's proceed to open forum. Our first speaker tonight is Daniel De La Cruz.
Hi, thank you for having me. Mr. Espinoza, you're really quick to define, I guess, the victim and the suspect. But you failed to go over the Texas Educator Code of Ethics policy, which reads, "The Texas educator must maintain the dignity of the profession, shall respect and obey the law, demonstrate personal integrity, and amplify honesty and good moral character." It also states that the educator, educator, excuse me, shall comply with state regulations written local school board policies and other state and federal law. My concern is, does this policy just apply to your teachers and staff and not yourself? Because another thing you did mention, which is very concerning, is you didn't file charges, which questions if your so-called retaliation warrants the punch. Was it really a headbutt? Did it really not happen that way and you just took advantage of the situation? The principle of me coming here today, I have a lot of friends that are teachers at your district. As everyone knows, they can't speak because then they get reprimanded. But all I ask is for you to take into consideration if this ever happens to anyone else, to think about your situation. Because at this point, you're basically getting a second chance, and you should consider that when it comes to your teachers and your staff within your district. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Vibert Ski.
I'm sorry, ma'am, but I believe someone has a right to defend themselves.
Mr. Gondola, by law, you can't comment.
I believe everybody has a right to defend themselves.
Madam President, members of the board, my name is Vibert Ski. I'm a substitute in the district, a resident of the district, and someone who is interested in the cultural stock of the district as well. Now today, in front of you, I'm presenting what I hope would be an encouragement and an invitation to support our Cesar Chavez Heroes Run and Hispanic Heritage Month 2019. Now, the George Washington and Abraham Lincoln Volunteer Club and the East Lake Lions Club is pleased to invite the support of the members of the board trustees of this Core Independent School District in honoring our hero, Cesar Chavez, during Hispanic Heritage Month 2019. The celebration will honor the history, our history, sorry, as a farming community and the progress we've made into modernity over the last six decades. The celebration will take the form of a run and a fun walk for families, athletes, students, employees, and the wider community. This is a healthy and effective pastime here in El Paso, Texas, and we hope that it would be embraced. The date of the run is set for October 5th, 2019, at 8:00 a.m. The proposed route will be from Socorro High School because of its historic nature. This will lead on to Moon Road, on to Nuevo Waco Tanks, and under the I-10 Pass, then on to the East Lake Boulevard, and end at the East Lake High School. Based on where the race stops, the total distance would be between 5.8 and 6 miles. The group of walkers will begin at the District Education Center on East Lake Boulevard and end at the East Lake High School. The total distance will be around 2 miles. We're hoping to keep the entrance fee at $20 by reducing as many associated costs, including permit fees, security fees, and the likes. To do this, we hope to draw on the experience and relationships of our friends and supporters to make this a reality. After course, our remaining funds will be used to promote volunteerism and youth development programs within our district through the East Lake Lions Club and the George Washington and Abraham Lincoln Volunteer Club. Through this significant event, the East Lake Lions Club will also be achieving one of its yearly mission priorities for fighting diabetes and obesity through exercise and a healthy lifestyle. At this time, we're pleased to submit this project for your support in honor of our hero, Cesar Chavez, and our collective celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, the history of our community and the school district. In closing, I wanted to say congratulations to those persons who have completed 35 and 25 and 20 years of service, and I also wish to congratulate Alice for 11 years of service to the district. I'm taken by that because just recently, I was celebrating my 14th month as a substitute teacher, and I was having a good time at home with about 20 friends, and they were all saying, "We wish you many more." And I felt as though I'd achieved something, but when Alice could produce 11 years of work and then 77 years in dog years, I mean, it makes me feel as though I've really got a lot more to do. That being said, I wish to recommend to the district that this project that we're hoping to put forward, we hope to make it an annual event. And the reason why we hope to make it an annual event is not only because we want to focus on the diabetes aspect for the East Lake Lions Club, but it gives us the opportunity to come outside from the classroom and the buildings and the offices and basically meet as one family and do something together. So we're hoping that this would somehow find your favor, and we hope that on October 5th, all things being good, it will be a success. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six, district reports. A, facilities report. Mr. Eington?
Good evening, President and Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. My report will be starting on page nine in your booklet. The Facility Committee met a week or so ago and reviewed some of these projects, and this is, would be kind of like an executive summary. The first project is Socorro High School. The early package has been put out. We received the proposals on the 17th of July, and we received over 40-something vendors put together numbers and bid on this project. And currently, we are reviewing those bids to make sure that their scope work is covered. Once those are approved by purchasing or reviewed by the architect, then reviewed by purchasing to make sure all the forms and the logistics are correct, I issue a notice to proceed to the contractor to start the work. If you have not been by Socorro High School, there has been some work started. We are doing some temporary framing of some walls around the gym and the auditorium because that Gym B is going to be torn down eventually, and that's a part of this first phase package. So everything is proceeding. We do have our permits, and like I said, we are staging the area. The contractor is out there. He is, will start putting up fences. We are working with the administration and the district. We know that there are a couple of functions coming up, and those are, be taken in consideration, and I'm working with the contractor on that. This particular site plan is a little bit different from what you have seen in last month. The yellow area is basically what is considered Phase 1, and if you could see a red line outlining that, that's basically the fencing that will be going up around the school. You notice that the parking adjacent to the auditorium, to my right-hand side of the yellow block in the center, this, I guess, below the softball field, will be kept open for these functions and for the homecoming parade and the football game on the 19th and 20th, I believe, if those dates are, thereabouts those dates. So you can see that we are starting to stage the site. The next one is basically showing where we're going to be placing some temporary walls in order to tear down that darker area, and that is going to go, that's in the process of being installed right now. Phase two, we, I met with the contractors this afternoon. Phase two, which is the remaining, or package two, which is the remaining, will be brought to you in August, at the August board meeting for the guaranteed maximum price, and that way, we have everything under contract if the board approves that guaranteed maximum price in August. Cactus Trails. Cactus Trail, the project is being finalized. We are working with the fire marshal to conclude some of his inspection. He's been out there every day, and we're just trying to get, you know, him to sign off on areas. He's signing off on something. Met with the contractor also today, and they have worked out an arrangement that he's going to be out there pretty much the six hours are his scheduled time tomorrow to finalize. The teachers are in, they've been in since Monday. They have staff development going on. They were able to move and start setting up their rooms yesterday, and they're doing that today. Tomorrow, of course, we're all going to be at East Lake, so this is going to give us some opportunity, time for the fire marshal to complete his work. We did receive $100 on our health inspection on a brand-new school, which is kind of unheard of, but we got our health inspection. Kudos to the CNU staff and Shelley and her ladies getting that accomplished. So all of our schools, if you go back a year from now, we were serving some cold meals the first week or so in Carrasco. But all of our schools, even the ones that we were remodeling, Rojas and Cooper, and we did some more work in Carrasco as far as the punch lists go. All of our schools, Monday morning, will be serving, will be serving hot meals. So I think I have some pictures. Of course, this is the way it's looking now. Thursday afternoon, there is a open house beginning, I believe, at 5:30, where the students will come in and meet their teachers and greet their administration. So the fencing and all that work will be taken down to accomplish that. As you can see, that the building is near complete. It's not totally complete. We're going to still be working on things, just like any construction project. But as far as substantial completion, which is basically contractually 95%, means that we can occupy the building if we get sign off from our fire marshals, which we will, we'll be able to start school bright and early Monday morning. You can see, this is...
Mr. Eington? Mr. Gondola?
Can you go back to that last picture, please?
Yes, sir.
I don't see a cactus.
No, that's a good point. There was a, there was a big one in the...
I'm looking for a cactus, a cactus trail inventory.
There was a big one in the gym.
I am looking for one in there. Unless you got a rattlesnake in there somewhere.
Yeah, you'll see one in a minute. This is the gym, and there's a diamond back.
I just hope there's a real one.
Hopefully, we won't. Couple of our other schools in our student activity complex tend to invite those critters. This is the gym. You can see the principal's office, a shot of the kitchen area, and through the servants' lines from the cafeteria. You can see that the conference room is being set up, and on the left is a classroom, so tables and chairs and desks and everything are installed. Teachers are setting up their rooms, working with their, getting their books and textbooks put up. Here's a better picture of a typical room.
Mr. Eington, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you to your entire team. I know that between child nutrition and your maintenance and operations, that y'all have worked tirelessly to get the school completed in plenty of time for the teachers to move in. We are deeply grateful. We appreciate it. I spoke to Ms. Farmer earlier today, and she said that Ms. Thomas, the principal, and the teachers were just beyond excited to be in the school, and we thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. I'll let my staff know. Thank you very much. Montwood High School, the improvements to that. We met with the contractor today. We reviewed the 50% construction documents, which is basically halfway through putting the pencil to the paper and completing all the drawings, and reviewed the budget for that particular project, and the budget looks right on track right now. We are in real good shape there. Our anticipation is to bring you a guaranteed maximum price in September on that, at the September board meeting. Americas High School, we're working, developing a budget on that. We are trying to get a early package out. We have not totally scheduled that, but I know that the architects have got documents together, so we just need to get it on our list of bidding schedule through the purchasing department. Eldorado, we do have a guaranteed maximum price for the sports lighting, and we are working to bid that out here in the next couple of weeks, put it on the streets, and to receive the bids on that particular project. The new student activity complex. We've had two meetings with our architect firm, architectural firm, and we are working with them to coordinate, to get them some thoughts. Various departments have met with them, and we are anxious to close on the property. I've got the preliminary closing statement from the city finally that we have, we're working out, scheduling that, and Mr. Russ is not here, so he would probably drop dead when I ask him to cut a check for that piece of property, but that's coming. So we're happy about that, and we are hoping to finalize that closure on that property. The 16 auxiliary gyms, packages 1, 2, and 3, they're divided up in different categories. The architect is still finalizing everything. We've got all of our testing done, our additional testing that were required by the fire marshal on some of our tennis courts and stuff that we are using to access that for fire protection, and we should be putting this out for proposal here, I'm guessing, here in the next 30 to 45 days. Support, service, and technology building, there is an agenda item on that. I would like to, you know, wait until we, you know, report on that during that particular agenda item. The same thing with the new combo school. There's two agenda items on that, and I can bring you up-to-date on that when we discuss that in new business. We've also, we've been working since the end of, 1st of June until now, on various projects district-wide to upgrade our existing campuses, and you can see that we have been working on some marquees. I like the job that the guy on the right is doing. He's one of my, he just dove in, closed and all. I would have, I would have put on a swimsuit or something.
Did he go down the slide?
I don't know if he went down the slide. But they got in the pool in order to work on the electrical lights and do some work and repairs to the school, so we are working on upgrades throughout the district. Herschel Antoine and PDN, we had the big transition between the two, converting one from a, one level to the other level. This shows that Antoine was a pre-K5 campus, and it had some graphics and stuff. These photographs are in the libraries. You can see the one on the left, my left, with the, kind of the rendering on the wall. That is gone. The middle photograph is the work being done during construction, and then we built the new circulation deck for the library. You can see that the hallways were painted more elementary style. This is going to be a new middle school, and then we upgraded the corridors to a more appropriate grade level. Classroom's the same thing. We did a lot of work, taking out old storage cabinets and putting in new millwork and stuff that our department put in. We converted a teacher lounge, in fact, we took two rooms and converted, made it a little bit larger, and we did that in-house. This is a good picture of what we've done, and we've gotten a rebate from the SCORE program. I think we got a $1,500 check, thereabouts. The picture on my left is what it was, and the picture, the bigger picture, is the new lighting, the LED lighting. It shows that it's more brighter and... It shows that it's more brighter, and we got a rebate from El Paso Electric on this particular job. That concludes my presentation.
Are there any questions?
Just a cactus.
Just a cactus.
Yes, Dr. Espinoza? Yes, I do want to recognize and thank Mr. Aynton and the entire, his team. On Saturday, as Mr. Aynton talked earlier, there was teachers, there's people, there was people working at Cactus Trails Elementary. It's our newest school. We're opening up to receive, it's ready to receive students on Monday. Saturday, I went by, and I saw the technology department, I saw, I saw Mr. Ross, I see him over there, Mr. Ross and his entire department doing the wiring, custodians, the principal, assistant principal. I saw husbands, wives, I saw daughters, all hands on deck to continue to make sure that that school was ready to receive students. It's an exciting day. I can't wait for that first day at Cactus Trails Elementary. I'll be there first thing in the morning to receive those students as well. So, Mr. Aynton, great job to you and our entire team at S I Z to get Cactus Trails.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Aynton.
Thank you.
Item six B, Safety and Security Committee update. Mr. Castro.
Good evening, Board President Nahara, School Board members, Dr. Espinoza. Before I start the Safety and Security Committee, I don't have any pictures of, or we don't have any pictures of cactuses, but we do have some pictures, and it's real good pictures of our Keep S I Z initiative. We have a lot of important information that we're going to pass along to you for this coming school year. Our Safety and Security Committee has been working hard this year. I'd like to recognize them if you're here, if you can just stand and wave, because all this that we've been doing is part of our Safety and Security Committee. Thank you for being here, because it takes a whole team. Everything that you see up here, it's part of our Safety and Security Committee, which is required by law that we have it. We started our Keep S I Z initiative, and the way we started our Keep S I Z initiative was, we came together, we talked about what are the important pieces to talk about as far as safety in our schools, mental health, emergency management, and law enforcement. As you'll notice towards the end of the presentation, Senate Bill eleven, we'll talk about it here in a little bit, it addresses those big pieces within Senate Bill eleven. So, what we did is, we basically went out on the road, and we started talking to our stakeholders with regard to those big pieces within safety. Our information, it's on our website. Basically, our website has the Keep S I Z initiative on there, and anybody that comes into the website, that red marker up there has a Keep S I Z initiative, and it has all the information in there. So, when you go in there, everything we're presenting here is also in our website. And from what I understand, that website, that piece of the website's always been, a lot of people go into it, take a look at the information that we have. Okay, so, our mental health piece of it, we do a lot of training with our mental health, Ms. McCavan, our Director of Counseling Services, she does an excellent job getting out and doing suicide prevention awareness, doing mental health awareness for our stakeholders, for our personnel, for our students. So, that's what we basically talk to everybody about as far as the mental health piece of it. Okay, our standard response protocol, this, you'll see as we talk about later on, as far as Senate Bill eleven, has become law. So, what is standard response protocols? Basically, the five protocols, or the drills that we do in our schools, which is lockout, lockdown, evacuate, shelter, and hold. So, those are the drills we do in our schools. We, the information that we're talking about right here, when we went out and did our Keep S I Z initiative, we talked to parents about it, we talked to them, let them know what we do as far as, how we keep students and staff members safe in our schools. Okay, increased law enforcement in our schools. One of the things that we really worked at was our police department, our police department here, they went out and they collaborated with the different law enforcement agencies, and to let them know also what kind of services that we offer, and what kind of protocols we have in our school district. They did an excellent job as far as that. And in addition to that, they go, they get into the classrooms, they get into the classrooms, they talk about education, great program that we have in place, a gang-resistant education training. They get into the classrooms, they talk about that to our students and to our staff members. So, Chief Castro has, and his staff, has done an excellent job as far as getting to the classrooms and doing classroom presentations. Okay, this is the first one we had at the beginning of the year last year, was through our Eastlake feeder pattern. We went out and we invited the community, and we talked about those pieces that we're talking about, the account, the mental health, emergency management, law enforcement. That picture you have in front of you, basically, you'll see DPS there, you'll see the collaboration with our Sheriff's Department. So, this was at Eastlake. We did that on a Saturday back in August, I believe it was, and here's some pictures from that S I Z, our first S I Z initiative that we went out to talk to our community members. So, you see a lot of interaction there with our, with our students and our community members. And then we did the same thing at Americas, so we invited everybody from the Americas feeder pattern, come out, take a look at the information that we had, and there's some pictures there of us presenting to our community members. On the bottom right-hand corner there, you see El Paso Police Officer there, that was part of our community. He was actually one of my ex-students back in, at Montwood while I was teaching there, so it was good to see him. I still remember where he sat, but anyways, he was a good student. Americas feeder pattern, some more pictures there, what we did when we went out to, when we were visiting with the community. And then we also went out to a father-son conference. So, the father-son conference, we're actually a breakout session, and we did the same thing. We presented all those big pieces within our, within our school safety, and we presented to our parents. When we did the father-son and the mother-daughter conference, we actually, excuse me, the, we actually had a lot of good communication with parents. They had a lot of good questions with us, a lot of good questions for our law enforcement officers, for our counselors who were presenting, so those were good sessions. We also had the opportunity to go out to Region, oops, Region nineteen, they had a safety summit, and we also presented there. So, we took, we went out there, we collaborated with Region nineteen, and we presented the information there, and we had stakeholders from Health Smith County, from Dell City, so a lot of people came out, we talked about standard response protocol and what we're doing here in the school district. We also had the opportunity to present at the Region nineteen Education Service Center, the safety summit, and this is a picture from there. And then we also presented the parent engagement conference. This was on a Saturday, so we had a lot of different questions from, from parents from all over the county. So, we're actually a breakout session, so they came into our sessions, and we talked about what we do in our school district. Oops, go back. Now, we had our Keep S I Z initiative all year long. We submitted to the Texas School Safety Center as a breakout session at their state conference. We were accepted to present at the Texas School Safety Center at the state conference. We were one of the breakout sessions, and it was, it was very good. We had probably about fifty participants in each of the breakout sessions, we had two of them, and a lot of good questions, and I, we could say that as far as getting the feedback from the participants there, we're working far ahead of everybody, because we have a lot of internal communication, a lot of our stakeholders coming together, communicating now, so that was a real good response to what we did there. And just to let you know, for this conference, there was, I believe, over seventy submissions to present. We're one of the thirty that were selected to present at the state conference. All right, so, state law is going to change for school safety. This is probably the biggest school safety bill in recent history, Senate Bill eleven. Basically, what Senate Bill eleven talks about is everything within our Keep S I Z initiative. What's going to happen within Senate Bill eleven, starting September the first, all the emergency drills that we do are mandatory. Okay, we've been doing it as best practice and implementary, our district emergency plan, but now it's, they're mandatory through the Texas School Safety Center and Chapter thirty-seven of the Texas Education Code. In addition to that, we're going to need to develop our campus threat assessment teams. There's training coming up with regard to that through the Texas School Safety Center, so we'll be participating in that. And then in addition to that, the Texas School Safety Center is going to have a compliance department or division, and what they're going to do, they're going to randomly select school districts, the school, the thousand twenty-four school districts that are out there, and they're going to come knock on our door and say, okay, show us your emergency plans, show us your emergency drills, show us your safety and security committee, who's on the committee, show us your agendas, what are y'all doing, show us your emergency drills, everything that we've been doing in the past as far as our safety and security audits, they're going to come and they're going to start doing random assessments of schools. And basically, if we're, the school districts aren't in compliance, what's going to happen? They'll assign a board of managers to the school district. The other piece of it, one big piece of it, is there's going to be a school safety allotment for school districts. This is going to be school safety funding for the school districts. So, once that funding comes through, we're going to sit down as a team, and we're going to take a look at how we can improve the structures that we have within our school district. And just a couple of numbers here, nine hundred and sixty-seven drills that we did total, all last year in our campuses, four hundred and seventy evacuation drills under night lockdown, ninety-seven shelter in place, hundred and five lockouts, and a hundred and five hole drills. Next bill here is House Bill four ninety-six, and again, we're ahead, because we started doing the training, we got together, it's basically how to use a tourniquet. So, now it's state law. It's state law that schools have to implement a bleeding control program within the school district. So, we've already had our police officers trained, we had our assistant principals trained, and our nurses are already trained. So, and we also have the equipment now, so we're now, we're going to have the tourniquets, and we're going to place them in our A Ds within the school district. So, we'll have that in place already. So, and again, police officers, nurses, assistant principals, and in the fall, we're going to start working with security officers to train them also. In addition to that, we're also going to start getting to the schools to provide that particular training for stop the bleed. And that's all we have.
Okay. Are there questions?
President Nahara, yes. Mr. Castro, and to all the committee, thank you all so much for your work in maintaining the safety of our students, and one of the things that I really think we need to point out is, school safety doesn't just mean our drills, I mean, we're really looking at mental health.
Yes.
You know, of our staff, of our students, everybody involved, obviously, that's, that's something that we've, we've really looked at, and again, thank you all so much for your work. I know that, you know, the state is mandating our drills and everything, and again, I appreciate all your work, and especially the documentation that goes along with it, especially if the state or anybody is going to come in and do audits of what we're doing. Again, I think we've gone above and beyond in not just looking at it as a state-mandated drill, but truly preparing our students and our staff for any emergency. I know a few years ago, we talked about some of our major emergency plans, and I just got so choked up with that, and I still think of that day that we were discussing this because of our times and what's going on in the world around us. But I, again, I appreciate you all so much and the work that you do to our administrators and our campus staff in preparing our students and our teachers and staff for any emergency that may come our way. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Rodriguez, in addition to that, I think, it takes a team, from the principals, to the school administrators, to the teachers. Right now, this week, we're, we're out training everyone. I think the big focus, I believe, is far as, is everybody being on the same page when something happens, and that communication, so it truly is a team effort with regard to that. Thank you.
We appreciate that.
President Nahara, yes, I as well echo what trustee, what Vice President Trustee, Ms. Rodriguez stated. You know, Mr. Castro, but also Chief Castro, who's sitting right behind, also Sergeant Delgado, like Ms. Rodriguez said, they'll present many times at principal meetings, they'll present at assistant principals' meetings, making sure that our number-one direction, our strategic direction, the safe and supportive learning environment, is in place and ready to go for the entire school year. Like Mr. Castro said, it's a team effort, so I just can't thank everyone, the entire police department, Mr. Castro's team enough. Thank you.
Absolutely. Mr. Castro, I had the opportunity to attend one of your safety and security meetings, and it was exceptional to see all of our different departments, you know, this is not just safety and security. As Dr. Espinoza and Ms. Rodriguez said, this is everyone in S I Z working for the safety of our students, and the fact that our legislature is making some of the drills and the stop-the-bleed training mandatory now, I think it speaks very highly for our district, that this has already been our practice. This was, this was ours already. It's not something we have to implement because the state is telling us to. We've done it because it's what's been the best interest of our students and our staff. I also learned that, and many may not be aware, that the audits that the safety and security team have to conduct are massive. And I mean, you know, it takes multiple teams going into schools, checking everything, making sure everyone's trained, making sure the school is safe, and that alone is a huge undertaking that y'all do an amazing job at. So, we are just very appreciative for everything that everyone does to keep our students safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, yes, sir, we're done. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, guys.
And item six C, the Y W C A, because the W makes a difference. Walk a Mile in Her Shoes campaign. Ms. Rodrigo.
Good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. I have the distinct pleasure today to introduce our guests from the Y W C A. As you know, we have a very strong partnership. We have the ACE Twenty-First Century Grant in partnership with the Y W C A, and they also do all of our after-school programs, and we're always working in conjunction with them, with Dr. Acosta recently, Ms. Zapata, putting, finding ways where we could better serve our kids and work together as a community. It's been a great, great partnership, so we're very grateful for that. So, today I have the distinct pleasure of introducing our guests that are here, that are going to talk to you about Walk a Mile in Her Shoes and what that is all about. Dr. Sylvia Acosta, the CEO of the Y W C A is here. Also, Ms. Debbie Hand, she is the board president. Sharon Robinett, she's the board president-elect, and in partnership with them, and he's going to give his testimony, is Mr. Sean Olis, and he is with Prudential, and he actually works with the Y W C A, but with us as well, because he provides a lot of the STEAM activities, and Dr. Acosta will tell you a little bit more about that.
Okay.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
President Nahara, members of the board, and Superintendent Espinoza, thank you so much for allowing us to be here tonight, and we do thank you for the wonderful partnership that we have. We are thrilled and excited that we're in every one of your elementary schools with our after-school program, which does incorporate the STEAM curriculum, as was mentioned earlier. The Y W C A has many projects and programs that support our community and our families in El Paso, and we're here tonight to talk about Walk a Mile, which is one of our many programs, and we hope we can invite you to become involved. I would now like to introduce Dr. Sylvia Acosta.
Hello, members of the board, President Nahara and Superintendent Espinoza. I feel like I'm with family right now. I really do. Like, everything that I was watching, honestly, we were just at Cactus Trails ourselves like two weeks ago, licensing the area for our after-school program. So, everything that you're, we were at the, I presented at the mother-daughter program for Socorro, so I feel like I'm such a part of this community. But what we want to talk to you about today is Walk a Mile in Her Shoes. The Y W C A has been here for a hundred and ten years, and we have, one of our mission-based programs that is most important is our Transitional Living Center. Our Transitional Living Center houses community members, women and children specifically, from all over the county and all over the city, so we have some individuals that are in your area as well, that come from this district. And what we do is, we support victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. And this is a very important part of our mission and very important part of the work that we do every single day, because we know that they need to have an advocate, and we provide comprehensive support for those families so that they can move beyond their current circumstance. And we would not be able to do that without the partnerships that we have. So, I'm going to, I'm going to not transition out yet, because before I do that, I want to thank you. I want to thank each one of you and the superintendent. I want to thank you, because sometimes public service is very difficult, and sometimes public service brings in attention that you don't want, but let me tell you, you have the respect of our community, and we want to thank you for everything that you do for the kids in our community. We know how much you care for them. And so, on behalf of the Y W C A and the forty thousand people that we serve, I want to say thank you to you, because we know you have a tough job, and we thank you every day for doing that, every single day. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, now I'd like to turn it over to Sharon Robinett, our president-elect.
Thank you very much. The Walk a Mile in Her Shoes is an event that I'm very passionate about. I've been, I've chaired it, I guess, about the last four years, three or four years. The Walk a Mile in Her Shoes is the international men's march, bringing awareness to stop sexual assault and domestic violence. It's, I would like to mention that it is a symbolic mile. It's a very small little walk right around, right around San Jacinto Park, and a lot of fun. We are hoping for this- We are hoping for this year 400 walkers, and there's 200 participants. And so I'm here in hopes that I have a vision of a nice big banner that says, "The Socorro Independent School District: Leading, Inspiring, and Innovating", and all of you guys walking right behind it in red high-heel shoes.
That is a beautiful vision.
And any team members of SISD to join. Hector Reyna in particular, if that's okay. So it is our hopes that she will join us. Many of these women and their children leave with only the shirts on their backs, and this event helps support the Transitional Living Center to help give them a hand up. So before I also, if you don't mind real quick, before I turn this over to Sean real quick, I too would like to, I have four grandchildren and five, I did have five that were in the Socorro Independent School District. And I wanna say thank you, Dr. Espinoza and board, for the amazing job you have done to make Socorro the best school district in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Sean Olis.
Wow.
The grand unveil, the grand unveil.
If you got 11 and 1/2, you're golden.
I do. So I've never spoken to a school board before, and this is not how I envisioned it. But I have to say, I'm kinda liking it, if I'm being honest. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna-
You got a little bit taller since I saw you a little bit earlier.
One of the pros, I'm gonna pop this off real quick, 'cause I like to walk and talk.
And we like to-
With my very stylish high heels here. So let me, let me tell a brief story about how I got involved with this. I am an El Paso native, and I have seen the Walk a Mile events happen for years upon years upon years. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be very mobile in these high heels while, and it's not gracious, but I'm gonna show that it's doable. Years over years over years, I saw people, I knew people that participated in these events, and I didn't. And my reasons were because I didn't wanna wear red high heels, and I didn't wanna walk a mile, right? Thirdly, though, no one ever asked me. So Dr. Acosta came to me just about a year and a half ago and said, "Sean, I've got this great opportunity for you. We're forming a men's advisory council for our Walk a Mile, and I want you to be a part of it." And in my zeal to help her, I said, "Yeah, I'm on board. I'm on board." And I said, "What does that mean I have to do?" She said, "Well, you'll help us raise awareness for the race and the walk, and then you'll participate and have a team yourself." And then it started sinking in a little bit, right? So the first time they bring high heels to the office, we took a great picture with our staff at Prudential. Prudential, we have a tagline, and it's "Bring your challenges". The challenge was laid before us from Dr. Acosta and the YWCA to step up and support the women of our community. So we accepted that challenge. We accept that challenge because we walk on behalf of our moms, on behalf of our daughters, on behalf of our sisters, our grandmothers, our sisters-in-laws, all the women in the community that need this support. We're there to support them. It's the least we can do. It was mentioned it's not a mile. I'll tell you after you walk it, it may feel like a mile. I feel like I've walked a mile up here just today. They're not comfortable, but it's the least we can do. And, Dr. Espinoza, your tie matches perfectly. We did bring a pair for you today. So I'd like to offer this challenge to the board and to SISD. Mr. Ganda, Mr. Morales, Superintendent Espinoza, Mr. Guerra, Mr. Mena, Mr. Garcia, we challenge you and your school district and your faculty and your students to join us in walking a mile with the YWCA. I wasn't kidding. I brought shoes, so if you wanna join us, we're here for you. We've got a box of them. It's a great event. We do it downtown around the Plaza Park. And it's amazing the type of camaraderie that putting on high heels brings to a group of men out there. If you've never been a part of it before, you've gotta be out there. It's a whole event with food and music and games, and men coming together to support the women of our community and being cheered on the whole time by the women in our community, even if we fall.
We will definitely be there to laugh.
So we're looking, we're looking forward to seeing you there. As you accept the challenge, which we hope to see, we hope that you will challenge other school districts to join us out there as well and show our next generation that we're man enough to step up and support the women of the community.
I appreciate that. I'd like to go to Canutio next, okay?
There you go. Thank you for the time. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say one thing before we go? So Sean is with Prudential, and Prudential provides the funding that allows us to provide STEAM education in each one of their elementary schools. And so Prudential is a great partner, and it's because of Prudential that we're able to have tutors in each one of the elementary schools, and we're able to have the STEAM curriculum. So thank you, Sean, and Prudential for that, and thank you, SISD, for entertaining this opportunity. We appreciate you, and we invite you to join us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Guerra.
Dr. Acosta, the rest of the board does not know, but you and I had a conversation in our luncheon, and I said that the board is gonna attend, so Mr. Garcia, Mr. Mena, Mr. Morales, Mr. Ganda, will be attending this walk. And we also challenge, we also challenge the HR department, all the departments, and Team SISD to go out there and step up. So we challenge everybody from Team SISD. I was telling Dr. Espinoza, we'd like to make this a big Team SISD event, so everybody's time to step up to play, guys.
Yay! Thank you!
I'm not kidding. I'm just engaging Canutio. You go out there, Canutio-
We're excited. We will go to Canutio, absolutely. You wanna come with us?
I sent you, all right?
Come with us.
You know what? I will.
Will you really?
I'll gladly go out to one of their meetings. I'll gladly go to a Canutio meeting.
Okay, so we'll invite you to join us, and then we'll go challenge Canutio.
I am so down.
We'll get on the agenda. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mr. Guerra. Thank you.
We'll continue with item number seven, consent agenda.
Ms. Nahara? Mr. Guerra? I make those heels look good.
Is there any, are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be pulled?
President Nahara?
Yes, ma'am.
Item number 7G2 and 3, please.
Are there any others?
Motion to approve with the exception of item 7G2 and 3.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Gondeta to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items 7G2 and 3. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. And item 7G2.
Ms. Rodriguez, I had some questions on the wording of a couple of these job descriptions.
Yes, ma'am, and we had the conversation, and unfortunately, Mr. Ortega is at a law conference to get on par with for this year. So what we're gonna do is, the conversation that we had, is we're gonna pull both items at this time so that we could get more information for you, and we'll bring it to the CNI Committee and then bring it back to the board next month.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Item 8, new business, a consider approval of new member to fill the current vacancy on the SISD Foundation Board of Directors. Ms. Hill? Is Ms. Hill here?
You got it, doc?
I don't see Ms. Hill here. Good evening, and I'll be happy to present on this item.
Thank you.
We did try locating her today, and we weren't able to get a response. But this is something that the Foundation Board considered, and they voted on it, and it's replacing one of the board members that's no longer part of the foundation. So they have recommended Harvey or Javier Enriquez to take the place of the other person that left. It was Antonio de la Rosa. So if you have any questions?
Real quick, doc, I'm sorry.
Mr. Gondeta?
Who do they wanna replace him with?
Harvey, it's Javier Harvey Enriquez.
From where? It doesn't say who he represents?
He is from the Fabens in Socorro community. I have a little bit of information on him.
Doc, I'm sorry, was it just for one person? It wasn't for two?
Just one. One person.
I thought it was for two.
For the foundation?
For the central appraisal?
This is from the foundation.
No foundation, I'm sorry. You're right, you're right.
Did you want the information on him?
No, 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 that's fine. I took that somewhere else. I apologize.
My second.
I have a motion by Mr. Guerra and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Graham.
Thank you.
Item 8B, consider approval of professional service fees for new combo school East Lake area. Mr. Iington.
Good evening. The first agenda item has to do with the professional services for the new combo school to be located in the East Lake area. If you recall back, this project was a part of the 2017 bond program. We put it out for professional services, had a bunch of architects apply, and we narrowed it down last month to three firms, with Mahias Morris being the first firm. And as per the procedures set forth by the board, we met with the first firm and negotiated a contract with them. And legal counsel has prepared a contract with Mahias Morris, architect for the new combo school, pending board approval for a fee of 5.95%. This is under 6%. This is one of the lower fees that we have gotten in recent times. Not recent times, but recently on the 2017 bond. It will be paid out based on the definition in Article 6, which is the cost of the work. As I stated, Mr. Blanco has drafted up a contract pending board approval. Administration recommends approval of the professional service proposal with Mahias Morris, architect for the new combo school in the East Lake area as presented.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gondeta and a second by Mr. Guerra. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item 8C, consider approval of the construction management at-risk fees for new combo school East Lake area. Mr. Iington.
Yes, this is getting on page 109 or 108 in your booklet. Since we've got the architect now approved by the board, we, our next step is to hire a construction manager at risk. There were three firms that proposed on that. We gave the ranking at the last board meeting, and the board approved that ranking. And we went out to negotiate with Bain's General Contractor, which was the number-one recommended firm. In our process of negotiation, we were able to receive a little bit of discount in the general conditions of $50,000 on what they had originally turned in. So following the procedures adopted by the board, administration recommends approval of the negotiated fees with Bain's General Contractor. Mr. Blanco has prepared a legal contract for that and an approval for the new new combo school in the East Lake area. Administration recommends approval as stated.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Guerra and a second by Mr. Gondeta. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item 8D, consider approval of administration's recommendation to reject support services technology building bid and rebid at a later date. Mr. Iington.
Yes, we received bids on May the 30th, which was the week of Memorial Day. Unfortunately, we only received two proposals, and those bids came in a little bit higher than what we were anticipating. Had we had gotten a couple more bids, we might have been able to determine a little bit better scenario and not knowing if these bids were high or if these are good prices. However, we went and, per the purchase in agreement and rules, we negotiated with the apparent low bidder, and we're able to reduce that cost by a little over a million one. However, that still is a little bit above the 2017 bond budget for this project. In the facility committee, I explained that we would recommend, you know, rejecting the bids and working on some redesign. Mr. Reyna was in that meeting, and I have met with his staff and have gone over some changes in the design. It's not gonna change the building, but I think it's, in some of the systems and things that we were calling out, we could reduce and come up with a better price. In researching the numbers and stuff, we felt like, anytime, this is a competitive seal proposal. This is not like a construction manager at risk. I know that's confusing sometime. Construction manager at risk, we sit there and negotiate with them, and let's say there's a $100,000 savings negotiated fee, that comes back to the owner. In a competitive seal proposal, we negotiate it out. Anytime you try to get money out of a contract, you're not gonna get dollar for dollar. So we feel like there is some money still out there by doing some redesign. And with the board approval tonight, we would put this out for proposal in the next month or so. It is a priority project because everybody's aware that we are in need of replacing our NOK in the valley. However, we are working with the architect and working with the Associated General Contractor or El Paso General Contact Association to determine when we put this out for bid, that we're not up against other projects. When we bid it in May, we were up against some big projects, and the turnout, being a holiday week, also limited to the number of people. So that's a long story. Administration recommends rebid and redesign, rebid at a later date. Reject it, excuse me.
So moved? Motion to approve?
Was that you, Paul? I'm sorry, was it Eddie? Okay, I'm sorry. I have a motion by Mr. Gondeta to reject the bid and a second by Mr. Mena. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Iington.
Thank you.
Item 8E, consider approval of appointment, reappointment of El Paso Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. There are currently two vacancies on the El Paso Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. And we have been, as part of the Lower Valley taxing entities, we have been invited to nominate two people to fill those vacancies. Now, at the same time, Clint ISD, the Town of Clint, EPCC, Fabens ISD, the Town of Verizon City, the City of San Eli, San Eli ISD, Socorro ISD, Town of Socorro, and Tornillo ISD are all part of the Lower Valley taxing entities, so they may nominate someone as well. When the nominations are received by the CAD, they will, their board of directors will make the appointment. So at the-
I get to see her Tuesdays and Thursdays, and I get her on, on Saturdays, and, you know, this, it's not an ugly balance. I'm just saying, no, it's, it's, I'm finding to see my daughter a little bit more, and, you know, I have this meeting today, and if I would stay on the board, I'd have another meeting on Thursday, and I would get to miss seeing my daughter the days that I do get to see her. I only get to see her for two and a half hours. And I'm sorry, I really, you know, I really have to choose when I'm here, I'm elected there, I'm elected as well, but with the individuals up here. So I really love staying on, I really love that board, but I love my daughter more. So that's the reason I'm stepping down, is to spend more time with my daughter for the time that I do have her. Like I said, she's roaming around there right now, and I have to take her back at 8 o'clock, so. Again, that's why I'm stepping down. I, individuals that are up here, I understand that it is a nice board. It is a very wonderful board. The director is a wonderful lady. Ms. Kilgore is awesome. Everybody on that board is, you know, it's, it's a very different board from here, but it's a wonderful board, I promise you. Whoever wants to do it, it's-
I'll step up. I'll second that.
Anybody else? We got two nominations.
Hold on just a moment. Hold on just a moment. Mr. Ganda, I would like to say that we appreciate the eight years that you have devoted to serving Socorro ISD through the CAD board, and, and we greatly appreciate it, but we completely understand that they're only little for a little while. Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Garcia, you would like to be nominated? And what else did I hear? Did I hear someone else?
I just, I was gonna nominate him.
It's, it's one Thursday a month, guys. It's just one Thursday a month. It's-
That's what somebody told me about this board.
No, that one is, that one really is one Thursday a month. It really is.
What time do they, what time do they meet?
They start at 5:30, and usually you're out by 7:30, 8:00 at the latest. It's a very nice board. It really is. It's, you know, your board of directors, something that, you know, you get to put that on your, you know, trust me, and board of directors sounds a lot different, so, you know, but it is, it is a nice-
And it's a one-year, one-year appointment?
It's two-year.
Actually, this is fulfilling the end of the term, so that you will serve until December of this year and then be reappointed.
And usually we get re-
I'll try it.
Mr. Mena?
So I make the motion that we approve Mr. Mena and Mr. Garcia?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Ganda and a second by Ms. Rodriguez to nominate Mr. Paul E. Garcia and Mr. Edward Mena to serve on the El Paso Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item nine, Executive Session. The meeting is to be closed for discussion with legal counsel regarding negotiation with City of Socorro on requested easements or other transaction involving real property along North Rio Vista Road, to discuss pending litigation in the matter of J. Hamilton versus Socorro ISD, to discuss personnel and real estate matters, to consider administrative recommendations for assistant principal positions at various campuses, and for licensed specialist in Socorro, in school psychology, the LSSP, and to consider superintendent's annual evaluation under Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074. And we are adjourned, the time is 7:35. We are back in session, the time is 11:01, and we will continue with New Business A: Discussion on Possible Action Regarding Pending Litigation in the Matter of J. Hamilton versus Socorro ISD. Mr. Blanco.
Thank you, Board President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, Steve Blanco, legal counsel for the district. I gave you all an update on the status of the litigation involving Mr. Hamilton and his lawsuit against the district. As I explained, we're currently at an appellate stage regarding a jurisdictional issue involving that claim. We're asking for the board to authorize myself and the administration to move forward with an additional appeal on that jurisdictional issue to the Supreme Court of Texas.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Guerra. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. And item B: Consider Approval of Administrative Recommendations. Dr. Espinoza?
Yes, President Nahara, members of the board, administration recommends Ms. Annabelle Ramos to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as a new licensed specialist in school psychology.
Motion to approve. Second.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
I'll take it.
I have a motion by Mr. Ganda and a second by Mr. Garcia. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Blanco. Item B: Consider Approval of Administrative Recommendations. Doctor Espinoza, first up is the assistant principal for Desert Wind School.
Yes, President Nahara, members of the board, administration recommends Ms., hold on, Mr. David Setos. David Setos as the assistant, to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as assistant principal at Desert Wind. Setos.
But it's David.
Second.
That's exactly what you said. I'm sorry, who seconded the motion?
It was Paul.
It's my wife, Setos.
Okay, that's what I wrote down.
My wife, Setos.
Okay. I have a, I have a motion by Mr. Guerra and a second by Mr. Garcia. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. And item one B: Helen Ball Elementary School. Doctor Espinoza?
Yes, President Nahara, members of the board, administration recommends Mr. Adrian Ramirez to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as assistant principal at Helen Ball Elementary.
Motion to approve. Second.
Is that you? I have a motion by Mr. Ganda and a second by Mr. Guerra. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. And item B to Licensed Specialist in School Psychology. Doctor Espinoza?
Yes, President Nahara, members of the board, administration recommends Ms. Annabelle Ramos to assume all the roles and the respons, and the responsibilities as a new licensed specialist in school psychology.
Motion to approve. Second.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
I'll take it.
I have a motion by Mr. Ganda and a second by Mr. Garcia. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Item C: Consider Approval of Superintendent's Annual Evaluation.
Is there a motion? I'm sorry. Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Ganda and a second by Mr. Guerra. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. If there's no further business before this board, we are adjourned, the time is 11:04.